Good evening. The October 9th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Here.
Councilmember Revel?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Karis?
Here.
Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Present.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Nusma?
Here.
Please add Councilmember Reed to the role. We have a full complement present, including obviously a quorum, and are prepared to do our work for the evening. The first item on the agenda is my public announcements and proclamations. There are three proclamations. The various groups and individuals who, on behalf of whom these proclamations are being made, are all unavailable this evening, and so they'll be presented at a variety of different times. So in lieu of reading them in full, I just want to say, one is a proclamation declaring the period between September 15th and October 15th Hispanic Heritage Month, and there are a number of commemorative activities going on across the community during that time that I encourage all to participate in. One is declaring today Indigenous Peoples' Day. So first of all, happy Indigenous Peoples' Day to all. And I think this is actually a proclamation that we haven't historically made, which is, I think, an oversight that I'm pleased to correct, and I'm pleased to partner with the Mitchell Museum, a real, I think, underappreciated jewel in Evanston, to not only prepare this proclamation, but more importantly, do work to both lift up the participation and accomplishments of the Indigenous community, and make sure that we as a city are doing all that we have to, to be as inclusive as we strive to be. And finally, declaring this pro-choice month, there will be a rally, and I believe March, going on this Sunday at noon, I believe, at Raymond Park, where the proclamation will be presented, and again, I encourage all to participate in that as well. That concludes my announcements and proclamations. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Good evening, Mayor. No announcements tonight.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is communications from the city clerk.
Good evening. I have one public comment to summarize. Resident Mark Carlin would like council to know that he fully supports ordinance 99023. He lives in the area and believes that it will enhance the neighborhood, and his comments will be available.
Thank you very much. This brings us to public comment. There are fewer than 15 people who've signed up to speak this evening, and so everyone will be given three full minutes. We begin with the two people who signed up in person to speak in person, beginning with Max Seeley, who will be followed by Ray Friedman.
Good evening. I'll keep this very short and simple. My name's Max Seeley. I'm with Joining Forces for Affordable Housing, and I just wanted to say that we are fully in support of the South Boulevard development. It's an amazing proposal, and will provide the community with 60 new affordable housing units, which we desperately need, so please support it without delay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ray Friedman.
Sorry I missed the Saturday morning goals meeting. I remember attending the last 9:00 AM goals meeting a few months ago, several months ago, and wonder if we set any goals at that time. I do remember there were a lot of good suggestions. It seems that it would be just as important to having these goals as it is to be able to measure the success or failure of each goal. I did ask that question at the last goal meeting, and asked what data we can use to show the progress of these goals. I didn't get any response. Wondering if you thought about that now? I believe it was about five years ago, 2018, when council members chose six goals, and wondering what's the status of those six goals that you chose in 2018. One of those goals was to stabilize city finances. It doesn't seem like that's going too very well. Since then, we've increased our budget by $100 to $150 million. We understand you plan to increase the budget for next year by another $57 million, and it was reported that you plan to increase property taxes by 7.9% and increase water rates by 17.5%. We would think by selling water to surrounding suburbs that our water rates in Evanston would be decreased. And speaking about finances once again, it looks like you're borrowing money from general obligation bonds at almost every council meeting, including three tonight. We have A5, consulting services. You're using general obligation bonds for $89,500. A6, $460,000 and go bonds. A7, another $23,000 and go bonds. I don't understand why we're doing this. We are consistently spending money we don't have, and next year you want to increase the budget to $459 million. I don't understand. When in 2021 it was $293 million, '22 $360 million, 2023 this year $402 million. I believe we have the eighth highest property taxes in the country, so why can't we figure out what our income should be, what our expenses are, and use the money we have instead of every council meeting borrowing more money? It's not a good thing. We need to get a handle on our finances, and we need to use the data on how our goals are progressing or not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now move to those who signed up online to speak in person, of whom there are several. And I don't see all of them here, so if there's any who signed up online to speak in person but turned out to be online, you can speak then during that section as well. The first person is Michael Kroll, who will be followed by Tina Payden, and then Carlos Sutton.
My name is Michael Kroll. I'm a resident of the 2nd Ward. I was wondering if the city could work with CTA about adding a bus stop for the southbound CTA bus route 93 at the intersection of Maple Avenue and Clark Street, near the entrance of the parking garage. Currently, there's a bus stop on the intersection for the northbound buses, but not the southbound buses. Google Maps does say there's a bus stop there, but there is no signage for it, and it's not listed on the Ventura app, and Ventura says that there's a bus stop that, with Ventura saying that there's a bus stop at the intersection of Church and Maple, but again, no signage at that corner, and it's usually blocked due to the construction going on around the AMC Theater. This means the next nearest bus stops are either at Church Tree and Oak Avenue, or at Emerson Street and Maple Avenue, both of which can be a quarter mile away. After going to the AMC one evening and having to walk all the way to the Emerson Street stop to ensure that I caught the bus, I contacted the CTA about the issue. They told me that while there isn't a stop there, Transit Evanston operates on a flag stop system, making every corner a bus stop. I tested that the next day, only to have to aggressively flag down a bus driver to make sure he didn't pass me, as they were unaware of that, of the flag stop service. This makes me unsure if I will try it again, and it's not all bus drivers seem to be aware of this policy. Adding a bus stop to this location should be a smooth process in theory, as the infrastructure is already in place, as the Northwestern Inter Campus uses that corner for a bus stop. This means that all that would be need to be done is add a single sign and to notify the drivers to stop there. This stretch of Maple Avenue has seen a lot of development as of late, and it'd be great to see some development goes towards its transit accessibility.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tina Payden, who will be followed by Carlos Sutton, and then Bill Hayes.
Good evening. I'm coming here to talk about 1840 Oak. In case you don't know where that is, that building faces the farmer's market, one of the sides. That boarding was, that building was boarded up Memorial Day weekend. I inquired what was happening with the building in June, and then July. I also inquired again in August. Last week, October 3rd and 4th, said building now has a fence around it. That indicates looking like demolition. I asked some neighbors and manager at E2, they said they weren't notified about anything. But coincidentally, I asked some people at 1033 University, and they said they were notified that they were going to be fencing up the building for demolition. I then asked the building next door to me at 1880 Oak, what were they, did they receive any notification? And they said they were kept abreast of what was happening. They said, yes, they were fencing up, the fence even blocks off the alleyway, and they said that the building was going to be imploded. This is very serious and puzzling to me, since everyone wants to talk about transparency, fairness. As you all know, that I'm the only house left in the research park. So since you couldn't steal my house, now you're trying to shake me down because you're going to implode a building? Where is my notice? I own three properties on that block and haven't heard one thing about this building. Where is the notice? This is ridiculous. I did receive an email from the city manager just prior to the meeting. There's not homeless people there now because they have fenced off implosion. Now imagine that some building next to your house is boarded up and said that it's going to be demolished without your notice. Somebody needs to go to jail. This is ridiculous that here it is harassment every time. What is the point of reparations when you're sitting here harassing the only person left on the block? You are outrageous that you sit here, and your name is a sponsor, a partner in 1880 Oak, so you know fully well what's happening.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Carlos Sutton, who will be followed by Bill Hayes.
Good evening. I just want to thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I just want to verify the concern that we have in our community. There's a serious double standard in this community, one dealing with notification. I've always brought it up, and especially for people who are considered to be stakeholders. I see a planned development now that has gone down the checklist. It has gone through all the things of having meetings, they've gone through all the things of making a presentation this evening, and I was wondering, why is only one ward following the demands or the requirements for the city of Evanston? Why is this a double standard? That we don't have the same kind of notification? We don't have the same type of opportunity to participate in planned developments in our community? And I think it's a disgrace that we come to this meeting and talk about things that are not available for us as taxpayers in this city, that every one of you in your ward can take for granted. It just simply isn't fair. And the other thing is, we talk about developers being asked to make some kind of solvency. Any of you that has ever had a mortgage would have to bring up sufficient verification that you could afford to purchase a house and keep. Now, when a developer comes and gets a substantial amount of money from the city, from the TIF, and does not have to guarantee any money personally for this development, but yet when the development is finished, he collects the rent? I think this is very unfair, and that you continue to sit there and approve these kinds of developments without going through the same procedures that you did for the one on South Boulevard. I'm glad to see that maybe you'll be able to do some buildings in this community that will go by your own specifications and requirements that you automatically dismiss when it comes to the 5th Ward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Bill Hayes.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to support the council's decision to purchase renewable energy credits in 2023. 150,000 new megawatts of renewable generation, 100,000 tons of CO2 reduced from the atmosphere. That is essentially the impact of the council's decision to approve the purchase of 150,000 REX in 2023. To put that massive number in perspective, that's the equivalent of, equivalent CO2 impact of having solar panels on almost 75% of residential houses and small businesses in 2023, making all of those structures net zero carbon in their electricity use. Given the confusion around the impact of REX on renewable generation, I wanted to clarify why REX purchases in general, and Evanston's REX purchases in particular, have a one-to-one impact on new renewable generation. The first reason is that the REX market is designed so that there's only one REX for each megawatt of renewable electricity generation. In other words, if REX purchases increase, then the amount of megawatts of renewable generation must also increase one-to-one. The second reason is how market prices work to keep supply and demand in one-to-one balance over time, in every market in the world, including the REX market. In short, REX purchases are an increase in demand that increases REX prices, and REX prices, along with electricity prices, are the revenues of wind farms that determine if a potential wind farm will be profitable and built. So for Evanston's purchase, it will cause prices to increase enough so that a matching quantity of supply will be built and keep total supply and demand in balance. I can understand there is a natural preference for projects within Evanston rather than projects outside of Evanston, but it's important to remember, to remind ourselves that climate change is a global problem. The planet is unequivocally better off if Evanston causes a reduction of 10 tons of CO2 outside of Evanston than if it causes one ton of CO2 reduction in Evanston. The obvious challenge for local projects will be to find solutions at anywhere near the cost of REX from low-cost regions, at least for getting to net zero carbon on electricity emissions. Realistically, that difference in cost may be the difference between meeting CARP goals at a cost taxpayers will accept and not reaching CARP goals at all. So I applaud the city council for making the right decision for taxpayers and the planet in 2023 by purchasing REX, and I encourage you to prioritize in the future the most cost-effective strategies for reducing net CO2. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the in-person portion of this evening's public comment. We now move to those who signed up online to speak online, beginning with Michael Vasilko, followed by Evie Russell. Is Mr. Vasilko in the Zoom? Ah. Go ahead, Mr. Vasilko.
Okay. Unfortunately, I had to move to my phone. I apologize for the noise in the background. The main comment I have is regarding A11. Unless I misunderstood something, this is for introduction only. I got the impression that the end of APW, this is moving to councils for a vote. It's for introduction, it should stay for introduction only. There's still, you know, a 17.5% increase in water rates is ridiculous for this year, and there's still no answer on the surpluses that we're expecting. There's still no answer on the Jack Mortell's report. I think he prepared showing something like over $100 million in surpluses, plus other surpluses I heard about. So before there's any more tax increases, property tax increases, or any more fees like this being increased 17.5%, there really needs to be a reconciliation of the surpluses. I keep caring about them. No one on the council is explaining them, no one on the staff is explaining it. There should be a final report on surpluses. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Evie Russell.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Page 59 of the 10/11/2023 LUC packet shows the comment, quote, "Council has never allowed for concerts in the U2 district." Kathryn Dale of DLA Piper responds, quote, "This is incorrect. In 2019, the Plank Commission and City Council permitted concerts in the U2 district on a temporary basis." Dale uses the 2019 text amendment as precedent. This is illegal. In 9/11/2019 council meeting, the following prohibition was motioned and passed unanimously," quoting Revel. "My last motion is to add a sentence at the very end of the proposed text amendment, and that sentence would be, this text amendment shall not create a precedent for future uses in the U2 district." The motion was seconded, no discussion ensued, all aldermen voted in favor, quoting Hagerty. Okay, and that amendment passes 9 to 0. I requested the commission, that the council do not use as a precedent the 2019 text amendment as a means to support or craft modifications to any part of NU's current text amendment proposal. I do suggest for you to remind NU and any city official that the 2019 ordinance cannot be used as precedent. Dale's response serves as a warning to you to pay heed to NU's long history of using precedent as a means to demand changes in the U2 district. If you change the current U2 zoning ordinance, you will have lost all legal protections when NU will be entitled to demand based on the precedent that you created to host more commercial events in the U2 in the future. Also, please accept a request by the Pokagon Band of Potawatomi Tribal Historical Preservation Officer for archaeological oversight before and during excavation of the NU proposed stadium. You've all received his, this request, and today is a day where you should consider this carefully. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment for the evening, brings us to the consent agenda. I've been told that item P1 needs to be removed from the consent agenda for an amendment. Is that correct? Is there anything else that folks would like to see removed from the consent agenda?
A11.
A11. So A2, I just heard a request from council, and then A9, I'm told there's a request that rules be suspended so that introduction and action can both occur tonight. So just, that brings us to the following four, A2, A9, A11, and P1. Am I missing anything? In that case, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move the consent agenda minus items that the mayor just mentioned, A2, A9, A11, and P1.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of the consent agenda with the exception of items A2, A9, A11, and P1. Councilmember Harris seconds. Seeing no discussion, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Karis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the consent agenda with the four previously read exceptions passes. We now move to item A2. Councilmember Reed, would you care to make a motion?
Yes, I will move item A2, MC Squared Community Choice Aggregation Program update and purchase of renewable energy credits on behalf of the eligible accounts.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of item A2. Councilmember Nusma seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed?
Yes, I am very supportive of this. I'm going to be voting for it. But I do want us to, you know, as I've urged in the past, I think, I appreciate your testimony tonight, I do think that the purchase of renewable energy credits has its place, but I also think that, you know, we need to do more to make investments here locally, and so I just want to continue to put pressure on us. I mean, Ms. Pratt, if you can confirm for me, the price of solar energy is now, solar panels and wind energy, it's less per kilowatt hour than sources of energy derived from natural gas. Are there, are there sources that, is that accurate? Are we getting that?
Good evening. Kara Pratt, Sustainability and Resilience Manager. Your question, Councilmember Reed, has a lot of nuance to it. I would say, I know this is unfortunate, but it really depends on the project, and so there are studies that indicate that many solar and wind projects are less expensive than developing new nuclear, coal, fossil fuel generating plants, but I wouldn't say that across the board it's always cheaper.
Okay. And with that nuance in mind, right, I do think it is important, and then when you factor in the, you know, the health, the public health impacts of using those other sources of energy locally, not only would we, if we made these investments locally, would we be offsetting asthma rates and other harmful chemicals in our substances, chemicals, carcinogens in our air by reducing the reliance on those fuels locally, but, you know, given that we are on a path where those sources of energy are becoming more and more less expensive than other sources of energy, we would be setting Evanston up for the new world, which is, when you, when you think about, you know, what young folks are doing now, which is creating, you know, large businesses, am I running up on time? No? Okay. Creating multi-billion dollar businesses with nearly zero net marginal cost to distribute the material, whether it's music or art, or all the other things that young folks are doing. By creating the availability to tap into that cheap, sustainable source of energy here locally, we would be attracting more of that talent and more of those businesses here that can tap into that next source of energy that's more efficient than the old, and so I do think that there would be a much greater benefit to us really doubling down on producing this energy locally, whether it's propping up energy co-ops and subsidizing some of that. I'm sure there are plenty of recommendations that our sustainability coordinator and our environmental folks could, could provide us, but I do think, you know, we have to start making those investments, and it'll put Evanston on a better footing for the future if we do. And I'm happy that there are communities elsewhere in the country, in the world, where they'll breathe a slightly cleaner air and have access to these energy sources, but doing it here locally will, will pay the biggest dividend moving into the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Glad that Councilmember Reed is willing to support this, and maybe I shouldn't talk back past the close, but I do want to make the point that we are in full agreement that we need to do whatever we can to maximize the amount of energy that we generate here within the borders of Evanston. Practically, that means solar energy. We're not going to put a wind farm in the borders of Evanston, or even offshore of Evanston anytime soon, and there is no way, given our tree canopy, which in and of itself is very important and valuable, that we are going to have enough productive solar panels to, you know, practically or even virtually take Evanston off the grid. So we are going to, for the foreseeable future, have to bring in electricity from elsewhere, and the way to make sure that electricity is renewably generated is, for the moment, the purchase of renewable energy credits. Now, moving forward, there might be ways we can evolve our, our electricity purchase under aggregation to even more closely align with the underlying renewable generation asset. This is a discussion we've had, you know, periodically over the last 10 years, essentially. Kara has staff working on presenting us some options for next time, when this contract expires in a year. The idea is, at that point, we'll have some additional options in front of us that are going to still involve REX. We're still going to have to purchase REX, but we might have some additional ways to tie in more directly to renewable generation. So just a preview of coming attractions.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Chera Karis.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the purchase is approved. Uh, Councilmember Reed, would you care to make a motion on item A9?
I will move item A9.
This is the one where the request was to suspend the rules.
Yes, I will move, uh, I guess first suspension of the rules, uh, for item A9.
Some moved. Second.
Councilmember Reed moves suspension of the rules so that Orderance 95-0-23 can be introduced and acted upon, uh, both tonight. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Seeing none, with the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton. Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Chera Karis.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the rules are suspended. Now, Councilmember Reed, would you care to make a motion?
Yes, I will move Ordinance 97-023, amending City Code, uh, Chapter 7, uh, Title 12.
I think you're, we're still on A, item A9.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Moving on. All right. Um, now I move Ordinance 95-023, amending City Code, Section 10, 11, 12, Parking Meter Zones.
Second.
Uh, Councilmember Reed moves, uh, final action and passage of Ordinance 95-0-23. Uh, I was inundated with near simultaneous seconds, the one that is most, now you're fighting over.
I heard Councilmember Hadekatis.
I didn't say anything, but it's.
All right, well, I heard Councilmember Nusma, and I'm gonna stick with what I heard. Um, so the motion was made by Councilmember Reed, seconded by Councilmember Nusma. Is there any discussion? Uh, seeing none, with the clerk, please take the roll, and again, this is on introduction and action for, uh, 95-0-23.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Uh, just, how do we remove someone from the roll? Is there?
They're removed.
Okay. Um, aye.
Councilmember Chera Karis.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and Ordinance 95-0-23 is passed. And now, Councilmember Reed, on item A11.
Yes, all right. Um, I move Ordinance 97-023, amending City Code, uh, Section 7, 12, 17, Charges, Rates, Fees, and Penalties.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves, uh, passage for introduction of Ordinance 97-0-23. Councilmember Harris seconds. Just to be perfectly clear, should this motion pass, the item would be on the agenda of our next regular meeting for action. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Chera Karis.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
No.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries, uh, and therefore Ordinance 97-0-23 will be on our next regular city council meeting for action. This brings us now to item P1. Uh, Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes, I move Ordinance 99-023, approving a map amendment in special use for a planned development at 504 to 514 South Boulevard.
Second.
Uh, and just from, so Councilmember Nguyen moves, uh, passage of Ordinance 99-0-23 for introduction. Councilmember Reed seconds. Just for my and the community's, uh, um, education here, this was amended already at PND, or you're proposing that it be amended now?
No, we are proposing amended now.
Okay.
And that language has been sent to all members of the council, but I, I can make that motion now.
Uh, please go ahead in that case.
So I move to amend item P1, Ordinance 99-023, to remove recommended condition number six, requiring one off-street short-loading berth.
Second.
Uh, so Councilmember Nguyen moves to amend Ordinance 99-0-23, uh, to remove recommended commission number six, requiring one off-street short-loading berth. Councilmember Hadekatis seconds. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, with the clerk, please take the roll on the amendment.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Revel. Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Chera Karis.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the ordinance is amended. Now, is there any discussion on, uh, the underlying and now amended ordinance? Seeing none, with the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Chera Karis.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
Uh, with eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, uh, and as a result, uh, Ordinance 99-0-23 will be on the agenda of the next regular council meeting, again, for action. Uh, this brings us, uh, at an improbable hour to call of the wards. Uh, Councilmember Burns.
Uh, no report.
Councilmember Revel.
No report.
Councilmember Reed.
Uh, I have a ward meeting, uh, this, or the last Thursday of the month at the Robert Crown Center. I also have two virtual office hours that, um, folks can join, and geez, I did not expect us to get to this point this quickly. Um, and those, those dates can be found online. The newsletter went out today, uh, alerting folks to, uh, those discussions, and I'm sorry to note, at our next ward meeting, we'll be discussing, uh, the 2024 budget. We will have, uh, budget staff there as well as, uh, other guests to be announced. That's it.
Councilmember Hadekatis.
Uh, just a quick plug for, um, staff's work on the Pro Housing, um, grant. Um, there are a couple of open houses happening this week. Um, I sent out information in the Ninth Ward Newsletter, um, so this Thursday, October 12th, um, there's a 12 to 1:30, um, PM meeting at the Lighthouse Conference Room here at the Civic Center, and then another open house from 6 to 7:30 at the Parasol Room. Hope, hope to have, uh, plenty of resident input on, on this topic.
Councilmember Kelly.
No report.
Councilmember Harris.
A second ward meeting, uh, ward meeting will be October 24th, 7, 6:30 PM at Robert Crown.
Councilmember Nguyen.
No report.
Councilmember Nusma.
Uh, fourth ward meeting will be Tuesday, November 7th. Uh, it might be a joint meeting with Councilmember Nguyen. Uh, we'll be talking about the city budget, uh, and then we have office hours for the fourth ward, uh, at 10 o'clock, uh, Saturday morning, November 11th. I'd have to look up the location, but it's on my, uh, council webpage.
And now, Councilmember Nusma is recognized to make a motion.
Pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes, 120 slash 2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, uh, litigation and establishment of reserves or settlement of claims. Uh, these agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act as set forth in 5 ILCS 120 slash 2A, Section C1, C11, and C12.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves the city council, uh, adjourn to an executive session to discuss the items just mentioned. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Chera Karis.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.